Flag of the United States of America and to their public who it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Liz is not here, I'll be the chairman tonight. We're here tonight to talk to Tom Quinnland in regards to the building inspector's position. I believe at this time we voted to offer you the position. I'm gonna leave the board to ask questions as far as anything that they might have on your mind for your duties and what you expect and vice versa. Okay?
Hi, Tom. Welcome back. Circumstances process. But you're not certified as what, building commissioner? I just wanna make sure there's two parts of the job in one year working on your certification, right?
Correct.
So which one is that?
I have one out of the three exams taken for inspector.
For the inspector, okay. So how long roughly do you think it'll take before you get that one done and get that passed?
I would hope by end of January. I'd like to go even sooner, but...
Okay, so within six months, you think?
Yes.
Okay. Does that exam come often or is it like every three months?
Take as much as you'd like.
Hopefully once?
Do you go out to a special agency to take the exam?
In Westbury.
Okay. You can go in anytime you're ready.
So as I understand it, we're gonna make the offer conditional upon receiving that within a reasonable period of time.
And the offer won't be a hundred percent till he gets it because we have to pay for a building commissioner to approve his work.
Right, so the full salary is fifty thousand if I remember correctly. So what will the difference be, just so Tom knows?
So did you talk to Joe again about the final number today? What number does he want per week?
Right, I actually am working with Joe as well, another commissioner, and Rico came up with some ideas, you know, what would like, he was saying seven dollars a week.
Okay.
This is Joe.
Joe.
So it would be approximately one thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars minus a hundred and forty dollars every two weeks.
And reasonable? Out of the, you're gonna take one exam, you've got one exam already done?
Correct.
And you passed it?
Yes.
You have two more to take?
Yes.
And what are those?
One will be the commercial and then the other is firing the Westbury.
Okay. And you don't have any problem getting both of them reasonable, like by the end of January?
No.
Okay.
I think state requirements when I spoke with Kim Spencer was that he has, by the law, one year to obtain his certificates and then at that point he can always request further extensions and they may grant as necessary.
So you can't say six months, is that what you're saying?
I don't think you can, no.
Okay.
Do we know that or we just maybe?
Based on the law that she sent me, I would say I would go with a year. And at that point, if it gets to the year, then we can sit with him. But if he thinks six months is more than enough, and we've had other issues with numbers lately, so it's best to give him.
Well, the other thing too is he'll, until he gets it, he'll be taking that seventy dollar stipend. It would be, you know, that won't be part of his pay. He has full ability.
Okay, can, just, I'm not clear. What will that allow you not to do if you don't have the inspector's certification? I guess putting it backwards.
What is the requirements of the oversight for Joe until such time?
Talking with the commissioners, Joe likes to give the sign, final seal on your home. Otherwise, I do everything else, I do all the inspections. You know, he's been out over the past year with me on the inspections, so he's comfortable with what I, what I approve and come back with that he doesn't even go and actually see it during the whole process if he hasn't. He's not the one who does one of the inspections.
So he'll be, he'll be looking at your work in the sense of the final inspection and writing the CO?
Correct.
And he'll go on the premises for that with you?
In the last few months, he actually hasn't even, you know, if, if, there's some cases where I've done, you know, all the inspections and he just, I came back in the office of the car and he issued the, my permission.
The concern I would have would be if, if you have something that you have a question on and you're doubtful on something and you're new, I mean, everybody learns by mistake, but I'm just saying, if there's something, you're able to go to him and verify that and even go back in the field with him and look at it?
Yes. And him as well as I have a great relationship with probably another half a dozen local inspectors and if they have any question with you, I'll just go to the state inspector. Two weeks for this area.
Joe's from Greenville, is that what you said?
I'm sorry?
Where is Joe from?
East Hampton.
So he's close by then. I, I guess my concern, all you're talking is that he may be signing off on COs with never stepping foot. Is that's a liability for us, right? I would think we want, if we're paying him, I'd want him to go in and do the job.
Well, I would think that if you're gonna give a CO, you wanna make sure things are flushing, things are complete and stuff like that.
But that's on his license, so it's gonna come down to his comfort level. And so, I mean, his reputation is good in East Hampton, so if he trusts Tom with his ability to do his job and Tom screws up, I think what it comes down to is his seal that Joe's putting on.
If Tom screws up, it's us.
Well, it's gonna be on his seal as well.
But it's still us, too?
So are you saying, John, that you would rather go with another candidate?
No, no, I'd like to see if Joe is willing to do this, that he actually do the work and we pay him to do the work. Because we're getting the difference in the stipend, I don't have an issue with.
But I think it's seventy dollars a week, right?
Correct.
So I don't know how much, if, if that's gonna entice Joe to actually do the work.
I don't know how many COs, I mean, most of the work is during the rough inspections and all that, right?
Correct.
You only, every house that's built's only one CO. Do you do a CO on a remodeling job?
That, he allows me to, to sign up on my, it's just on a new home and I don't, I've talked with other commissioners and I don't, and, and I don't believe Joe, it just, it's how he feel comf- feels comfortable that he has to be the one to sign that. In Greenville, I actually completely signed, you know, for everything. And, you know, he's the commissioner and he wishes to do that, and that's how, you know, if you're talking about him, he'd like to continue here. If he had any questions, he would definitely go out on the site. And if I had a question, of course, he would go out and oversee it.
Can I just ask Heather a quick question? Heather, if it's under, if someone has a license, Joe has a license and there's an issue, there's something that was missed, we have liability of three thousand dollars, something on those lines.
Correct.
And so would the, the burden be more on Joe or would it be on us?
I don't know, may answer your question.
We'd have, we'd have to look into it.
You have a three thousand?
I think based on the fact that, you know, Joe has good reputation in East Hampton, you know, he's essentially putting his license on the line to have Tom work under, most people aren't gonna say, well, I'll just have you work under me, it's okay. You know, they're only gonna let you do as much work. It's kind, same thing with the law and the paralegal. You're only gonna let the paralegal do...
Well, I'm on the PAs all the time, the PAs work right on the business, I have to feel comfortable with what they're doing.
With the amounts and the amount of supervision you're giving them without asking for more. So I think if he had any concern whatsoever with Tom's supervision, and I spoke with him earlier and he didn't, he said he felt very comfortable.
And I would, I would agree with that, Joe's comfortable and I'm comfortable.
I have a question. How many years have you been in the building trade?
Since I was probably fifteen, so...
So you have a lot of experience and knowledge and you've been out there doing the work and you know what the job entails, the rules and laws and so...
Yep, that's what I know.
What you do, right?
Yes. Still, we all learn every day, though.
Right, right.
Even the commissioners, like, you know, they actually would have been, like, behind the house in East Hampton was first one Joe, of course, has ever, you know, worked with. So he actually had the state inspector meet during our plan review and, you know, she had to go ask other questions as well. You know, it's always a learning experience with it.
Every day, every day. Giving us a talk every day. So do you want the job?
I'd love to have, yeah.
But you give me the job on it and just think that.
Question I have is, at least for the first couple of COs, I'd like to see you bring Joe into the job and just make sure you're on the right path.
Yes.
All right? And if it is an issue, I wanna be informed.
Yes.
Okay? When I say I, the board?
The board.
And I'd like to know how your first three or four COs go with him. And then there's a comfort zone there and I just want it established between you and us in the town. So I would feel better if for the first couple of COs, you bring him out there and make sure he's comfortable with your work. You know, and I think the board would be comfortable with that.
The CO would be comfortable.
And then keep us informed.
I mean, like we were saying, it's, it's a learning lesson, so if something you're not sure of, just, just ask. I mean, there's nothing wrong with saying, hey, I don't know this one. You're new in the inspector arena, if you will, so we're not expecting to know everything. Now, do we have, are we doing a contract or a?
A letter?
We have offer letter.
Sell out all our...
You wanna read it?
You can read it yourself.
You wanna read it out?
You wanna, you can read it out, but if we haven't put the numbers in here yet, or did you?
Um, I put partial.
Okay. Let me make a motion to have this signed.
Okay, well, I'm looking finished.
You wanna tell me what hours you'd like Tom to work?
Well, I'd like to hear from Tom what hours he's proposing to work.
I actually have a little, hold on a second, you guys in my...
Heather, do we do twenty-six payrolls a week or do we do twenty-six point?
I'm sorry?
How many payrolls do we do, how many a year, I'm not aware, I'm sorry.
I, I don't know how many payrolls we do in a year. I know it's, I think it's fifty...
I think it's twenty-six.
Fifty-two point.
Plus a split payroll.
Plus what?
A split one.
Okay, 'cause this doesn't quite come out to fifty thousand, it's a little less at nineteen fifteen. So I just wanna...
I wrote approximately on my piece, I think.
So it's forty-nine, seven, ninety.
Right, Tom, you're gonna get to know everybody in town.
That sounds good.
It says six eight, get to know everyone. So you're planning to get your certification eighteen months by this?
Well, that's actually what the state wants, it's twelve months and then you have a six month extension. That's why I, I don't believe you can change it by rule. I plan on having much sooner.
Well, the honor will be on you because you all get, you all get full pay in two weeks.
Correct, okay.
Two weeks vacation, ten days? What did we do for the vehicle last, last time? Were we doing mileage or just?
I think it was stipend. Just wanted to know the stipend.
I think we were doing a stipend monthly.
It was about, there was a discussion back and forth, Dave, I don't know if we ended up with stipend or, but at one point it was per mile.
I think the stipend we had agreed to or the board had agreed to once upon a time with Rich was, I'd have to double check and look it up, but I believe it was two hundred dollars a month.
He needs two hundred dollars? The two hundred dollars a month, Rich came to us on a finance committee and he was getting more, but he said, hey, I just, I'll go for two hundred dollars a month, make it easy on everybody and we accepted it. So that's how that came about.
So you think that's the current figure right now?
Well, two hundred dollars it is, yeah. That's what was budgeted again. And I don't know if you do the actual mileage, if that's high or low.
It's, it's a lot higher.
Two hundred dollars is a lot higher?
No, two hundred dollars, I mean, if we do the mileage federally, a federally approved mileage per month, it's gonna be higher.
Now, mileage, let's, let's talk about that just so, so Tom's clear. Mileage is from where? You live in, you live in Hadley.
Correct.
So we're not gonna pay you from Hadley.
Not until he comes to the building, the building out.
Okay, so if you have to come...
Unless he's called in for emergency.
Right, but if he's doing an inspection and he happened to be coming in from homeless from here out.
Agreed.
Just wanna, you know, we don't wanna put you in the middle of something, Tom, and have you say, that's not what I understood. How many hours did Rich work or how many hours is this?
Thirty.
This comes out to, I think, thirty-three, Tom, is that what you're proposing here?
It was just an idea, I just go in by the...
You can work longer if you want.
Correct.
I'm looking at, I think the approval was thirty hours a week.
Correct.
Okay.
I don't think we provided Rich with a phone.
Yes, we did.
We did?
Yes. He got one of the five phones of the highway department and he paid one or two months a year to offset it. Okay, all the expenses.
What's, what's the average staff member work in town hall?
It's thirty, if they do night hours, it's thirty-one hours a week, cause one night every two weeks it's, um, it's the additional two hours, so they put that two hours into each week. So one week it's thirty-two, one week it's thirty, so it comes out to thirty-one.
So can we agree that these are the hours that you're proposing and that we're gonna go along with, just so we can post them and be done with it? And make it official? It makes sense, one A and B. Again, Tom's not familiar with the town hall.
You're taking an hour off for lunch, right? You're working right through.
Either way, I mean, it's, it's, as far as like the inspections, it, I'm willing if the people eat something later on, you know, that was just a, that wasn't a set hour, I just figured, you know, and it's same as somebody did something on Saturday, you know, it would be...
Well, I mean, these hours, like Monday to Thursday, being in there from six-thirty to ten-thirty, I think Rich, you know, a lot of his business was done between seven and nine, I think, for the most part. And what times does the secretary come in there?
Well, right now, what we've talked about in the past was Jean is no longer in that office, she's now in the treasurer's office. So we don't have a continual coverage from a secretary right now, we just have Kevin filling in as needed. We have a sign posted on the door which seems to be working out fine.
What is the time that he's there now?
I, pretty much whenever he needs to be in the day, so he doesn't have any set time, but over time...
But if somebody came into town hall and he was working in your office, he's still able to go over to the permit and answer questions?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. There's a sign right on the building department door that says, if you have questions, please see the town administrator's office.
I just think that, Tom, going to ten-thirty is gonna tie your hands with getting out in the field. I think more like six-thirty to nine-thirty might be more advantageous. And then put the time in the field, whether it's for enforcement or your inspection. Some weeks are gonna be higher than the other and you're just gonna have to balance it. Do you understand what I'm saying, Joe? Everybody?
I'm good with that.
You're gonna have to find the phone wherever it is, unless you still have it or Rich has it.
Um, I think we know where the phone is, I think it's in Richard's hands.
Okay.
The only concern that came back from Randall's end a couple of times was when we had Paul and even I think right now with Rich, the calls have been higher number.
Okay.
So we need to, I think Tom and I've already talked about working out different ways to mitigate the cost of that, so we can, you know, whether it's calling in, checking the voicemails more, just trying to prompt people to actually use the physical voicemail there and ensure them that we will get back to them.
Well, we got that about four years ago and it worked all right. I mean, I, when I was there, I monitored the, the bills, but, you know, if people have certain features that they add to their phone, it's definitely gonna add them up, such as, you know...
Well, I think these are still our basic flip nineteen seventies phones.
It was only like nine ninety-nine and if they wanted some apps to go in there, they had to pay their own apps.
No, but right now they're costing on average about twenty dollars per phone per month. So we're actually working and seeing if we can't find a different plan of some sort. Even if, I don't know if we'd be eligible for something like, you know, the Verizon family plan where we have one and then twelve other ones.
Well, that's what that plan is, it's a family plan and it was cheaper than a business phone and it was more so for emergencies and contacts.
I would think, and you can tell me, I don't think Rich was really computer literate, right? I think he...
He was on it a lot.
I was gonna say, do you use a smartphone now?
I don't have a smartphone. My commissioner has it in Greenville because they use it quite a bit. They say, I'm staying there, you have to go for one for me, because a lot of people do the...
I would think a smartphone would make sense for him with the calendar and all that, I'm supposed to be on the go. And do you use computer now in your job, I mean, in the field or anything?
Yes, well, East Hampton is just getting, it's gonna be getting a new program. But Greenville, by the end of the year, it's supposed to have now even tablets and, which is, it's very, very expensive, something that, you know, you wouldn't...
Well, iPads though, you know, six hundred dollars. I mean, I, I, we have a lot of people and I use myself at, at work where people that are out on, in the field can really use them for planning. I mean, for the sake of six hundred dollars or so, I would think it would be good to, to equip you, I mean, that's my, that's my opinion, yeah.
Well, the way, the way the plan goes, you pay for the service, you have to buy your own phone.
So a phone?
Yeah. I mean, you can have them, you can buy the phone through them, but it comes on your bill every month.
Yeah, yeah. What service do we have?
That one there is AT&T Singular.
You can go out and buy a GoPhone, AT&T GoPhone smartphone for a hundred bucks, put the SIM card in, you're...
I'm gonna leave that part up to Tom. She'll find the phone for you and get that straightened out.
Okay, we wanna equip you, so, you know, so he's satisfied.
So, I mean, as far as the hours worked, I'm, I'm just recommending that he go from six-thirty to nine-thirty and spend the rest of the time in the field. Some of the other things that he's gonna need to work with is with Heather as far as new schedules are concerned for the, building permit fees and other department fees that are associated to the building department. Certification, it says eighteen months here, but like he explained, it's a year plus six months. He needs the additional six months, he's gotta ask for it. The salary will be fifty thousand dollars once he gets his commissioner's license, okay? Till then, he'll get the salary minus what we have to pay for a commissioner to approve his work. And the next thing here is number nine, vacation. Does he have any problems with two weeks?
What was Rich getting?
Well, the only issue is that we go, right now we're operating by the personal policy bylaws for everyone who's a non-contractual employee, non-union employee, based on that, you get nothing the first year is the problem.
First year or up until July?
Yes. I mean, they're in the process of modifying him and hopefully he'll be modified soon.
But, yeah, what she's saying is it's true, you have to be here a year before you get vacation.
He starts accruing from day one, is that correct?
No, not as it's currently written. They don't play the accrual piece, the only thing they do is, they do, the reason we've been running into problems is you don't get your vacation the first year, you take a year or two, so whatever you earned in year one, you serve year two. So if you leave end of year two, you get vacation to take with you for year three.
Okay, so you are accruing it, you just can't use it till the next fiscal year? Is it fiscal year or is it your anniversary?
It's fiscal.
Fiscal, okay, so you are accruing.
To an extent. Not the way most would do it, which is after sixty, ninety days, you've got one day and you earn so many days per month.
Oh, okay, so he's coming in November first, is that right? And our fiscal year starts July one, so as of July one, will he have two weeks or will he have a prorated amount? Cause he starts in November.
I...
There are some prorated...
There are some, he should, I believe he would get the full, to my, best of my knowledge, we can take another look at it. I have topic personnel.
If, if I'm gonna re-remember that, if he works six months in the system before it came to July one, that six months would be prorated, he might get three and a half days or something like that, whatever the prorate, there's a schedule there for that. But that would kick in the next year, the following year, he would be entitled to a full year. But see, the second year, you get two weeks right off the bat.
But that's how it's currently written, we are in the process of changing, including increasing the amount of vacation time on things.
Right now, we've gotta go, anything that changes, everybody gets, I just wanna make sure he's aware.
Well, I think what we'd have to do for this is especially for the vacation for November through December, it'd have to be unpaid vacation. And then as far as the other thing goes, I mean, if he wants to come back and revisit it with the board, the first of the year, if the PBB has a...
The point is, he's not a contact employee, so he has to follow into policy procedures. Okay? And she brought up a good point, if you do want, take some time out, you gotta clarify with this board and it'll be without pay that first six months or five months. And...
So I think he's already asking for November twenty-eighth to December seventh. He made note of that. For the board's knowledge.
What do we do for coverage, you know, Rich?
Cover?
Well, if his building commissioner is approved, is overseeing him, Joe, Joe would be the one to cover.
Oh, and Joe's okay with that, covering while you're on vacation?
Sure he would be, cause he'd get more money than his seventy dollars. We would then go back to our thirty-five dollar per inspection if he had to do anything.
We should just verify that with Joe, too. I mean, I, being a new employee, not knowing this, I, I wanna make sure you know everything you're getting and you don't get, cause you know, it's, it's tough sometimes.
Correct, right.
Well, you have one expense here, I mean, I don't know what the board feels about, you're looking for two forty a month. Right now, we're at two hundred. I don't think with the financial times, we can jump to two forty right now. But next budget process, it might be something to consider, but I'm just speaking for the board, I don't think we're gonna go over two hundred.
Yeah, that's within the budget, I'm just, do we wanna go on actual and see what that is or?
I think actual's gonna be a lot more, cause you already went through that. The finance committee went through that when you were there.
When, when he was doing it, but Rich was taking it from home and all that too and, and Tom won't because Tom lives in Hadley, he's gotta take it from here.
You wanna, you wanna see how it works?
I don't know, what, do you have preference on, to either one or to see how it works? You make it more, make it less.
I just went with the two forty, I asked other commissioners, other, you know, officers in East Hampton. As you agree with it, we got two vehicles, we couldn't go by that, but Amherst and a few other commissioners, you know, how they did it if there wasn't a car available. And, you know, the majority of them started at, at two forty and that's the only reason I'm on whether two, two hundred if it's, it's fine.
I think for the, for the year, we, we budgeted roughly two hundred, if that's what Rich was getting.
I think the board already said I would stick to the two hundred. He can address this, you know, if, if, Tom, do you wanna sort of keep a tally of your mileage? Just do it your own, I think what is the February, fifty-three cents?
Fifty-six. Fifty-six.
Goes up monthly, doesn't it?
No, I don't know, fifty-six point five or fifty-six? It may come down, prices have come down, but, but, you know, just we'll readdress it come the budgetary season, which is gonna start in a couple of months, I mean, for next year's budget. Have you put a budget together before?
No.
Right, you gotta know Heather, Heather's gonna get to know, teach you how to put a budget together.
You have another item down here, the phone, Heather will help, help you get that organized and straightened out. And if we could use the same phone, most of the contractors have that number, so it'll be helpful.
We can always point the number.
Okay. Uh, the next thing is you got classes that continue at five hundred dollars a year. A lot of these classes that I knew Rich went to and stuff like that were put on by the Commonwealth and there's the entrance fees. And some you're required to be at, some you're, you're not, you just have to use good judgment what, what ones you should be going to. But the five hundred dollars per, if it's in your budget, if it's there, fine. If it's not in your budget, don't overspend it. We're telling all department heads to stay within their means and I don't know if there was any money, you'll have to look into it.
We can, we can take a look at it, but just approximately, I think there was four thousand and the expenses, two thousand four hundred would go to the gas, so that would leave you with approximately sixteen hundred dollars, subtract five hundred, leave you with eleven hundred for other expenses. I know some expense line items have been taken out of your budget so far for small things and anything alike. I don't know what that comes to, but we can look at past years and see where we're at. The other thing I'd recommend is waiting till February, once we resolve that, get the finances in order for those three, your, all of your three accounts that you have, so that all the numbers are coming out in the right spot and that might give you a better idea.
Does anybody else have any other questions?
I think, I think it'd be good for Tom to sit down with Heather at some point to really go over your budget and show you your expenses line.
There's three lines.
Just, just, you know, so we can help plan and understand how the process goes.
You have any questions for us, Tom?
I'm pretty sure we think you answered them, like, that's why I presented this, I didn't wanna offend anybody, just, as far as like the, what I, if the budget would allow to, to change the permits and things to help get along, but I say you file and it makes it easier for everybody.
We're gonna have you work with Heather on that. Okay, and Heather's pretty good about keeping us informed. The other thing too is we're all very easy to get ahold of, get ahold of us if you got any questions. You, if you wanna have issues or you have questions, feel free to call us. If Heather can't help you, I'm sure we can. But with that being said, I'm just gonna rehash all this. Your salary will be, what's been budgeted, fifty thousand dollars minus the building inspector's fee and that will be reinstated once you get your full license, okay? The hours we went over, I don't think there are any questions on that. The mileage is two hundred dollars a month and Heather will work with you on how, you know, you're supposed to get your bills in, okay? And your start date is the twenty-seventh of October? Is that when you wanna start it?
It's open whenever it is.
Or November first, what do you think?
The sooner the, the less damage on the expense account.
Board's feeling, do we have anyone to start?
Twenty-seventh is fine, that's time.
Yeah, but you're gonna be on vacation?
It would be the following month, it would be twenty eighth.
Oh, so that's, that's fine, great.
Yes, it's already, it's off plan and, you know, and paid for that, so I don't understand.
Does it seem possible that we should have Rich at least be with him for a couple of days?
Whatever floats the board.
What's that?
Whatever floats the board. Whatever floats the board.
I think so much of the keys are on the bodies, but I think he should be talking about what he's doing, whereabouts he is and stuff like that, so.
Um, Heather, you can work out the details, but I'd like to see Rich, you break in, uh, for a few days and once you feel comfortable, um, um, let Heather know. Or she'll chat with you.
Okay.
Okay? But, um, that's something that, uh, I think we'd like to see happen.
Yes.
Uh, based on that, uh, if you're agreeable with that, uh, we have a contract here or not a contract, a letter of understanding.
That's the resolution for the Comcast charter.
And, um, okay, and, um, I'd like to have you go over that and, um, sign that.
Oh, and Heather, there's a couple of problems with that. One problem I can figure out.
Go ahead.
It's, it's just details, but it's gonna bite us. Yeah, fifty thousand, and like I said before, it doesn't come out to nineteen fifteen. It comes out to forty thousand seven.
Did I write approximately? I think I wrote-
Potential salary for this, but Ed's saying we're offering at fifty thousand, which I'm fine with, but those numbers are wrong if you, so. Yeah, and we got, and there's a lot of blanks in here.
Because I didn't know what the-
Right, so he can't sign it.
Well, let's take a handshake right now, is that?
You'll go with Heather and you'll sign this after she straightens his house.
Okay, I got one more question.
Does that require us to sign that?
I'll just have you sign it afterwards.
Okay. One more question?
Go ahead, Jeff.
What, what is your involvement gonna be with your current jobs once you take this job? Are you still gonna work for the other towns in a part-time capacity or?
I, I don't see, um, how it would be a little bit for Greenfield, but, you know, as far as East Hampton, if I could, uh, you know, do some inspections, you know, I don't say I have to do the sixteen hours, but or, you know, try it for a little bit, um, you know, later in the evening or a party or Saturday.
I guess our, our, at least my concern is we're the number one, you know, position.
Oh, yes, oh, yes. It's not gonna work, it's not gonna-
And, and the other, the other-
Joe understands that he, you know, he said, we can try it, but-
My comment on that is they're close. You have to make sure there's a complete separation.
Correct.
Cause they don't want any double dipping or anything at the same time. They're completely separate and you keep them that way and I think, you know, everybody will be fine. Okay, but, uh, your hours are here, you know, other than the meeting or, or talking to commissioner over in East Hampton, um, we don't wanna see you over there unless, you know, you're done with it.
Right. And the reason we're asking is cause we want you to be successful here. There's politics, you know, we wanna make sure, you know, you don't step on something wrong, so ask us a question and if you have any answers or questions.
Any other questions, Tom?
No, I think that's-
Again, I apologize for the delay and this communication, I'm glad that you're here.
For the tour?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yep.
The telephone?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We don't need to make a resolution.
We'll chat. Do you wanna give me a follow-up?
Um, we have, um, consent to sign for change of control at CAM, Comcast. Since we had this hearing, Heather, we have any meetings, uh, not meetings, but we have any, uh, correspondence to this?
We have not received any correspondence to the office pertaining to this matter.
No, how many days ago was that?
Uh, the meeting we had on this was-
Two weeks ago?
Yeah, at least. It was, it was more than two weeks ago even. Last week was a regular meeting. The meeting before that was the meeting for the public regarding the building commissioner position. It was, I believe, the meeting before that.
I just wanted to make sure that there was no number of days that we're required to hold this out for the comments.
We weren't required by law to do any of that.
I have this, uh, based on the hearing, the consent to assign and change of controls, I have a document to be signed by, it has to be attested by town clerk and chairman of the board or whoever's acting as chairman.
Well, the board votes to approve it, someone can come to sign it before.
What is your proposal? Do you wanna sign this tonight?
You could motion to approve and sign.
Second.
Uh, just for discussion here. So we really don't have any say in it because they're financially able to do it, so.
Thing we have is we have a contract with Charter and they were, they have to follow Charter's contract.
Yeah, Charter's not great to begin with, so it's not getting better.
But no, what you're saying, John, financially, managerial, legally and technically.
Unless we can prove otherwise, which we can't. We, we have to go.
And even if you said no, they would still have the right to appeal.
So with that in mind, uh, why delay it?
I have no problem with that. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
You could have some business tonight decide.
Oh, that's it. We'll take care of the-
Got orange.
It's orange.
Make a motion to buy some things.
Second.
Those in favor?
Hold it, we, um, oh, no. Two bills here.
No, we can do those next week, cause they're not on the agenda.
Okay, there you go.
Make a motion to a juror.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
I know it's after the meeting. Can we make a motion to have meetings as short all the time?
Yeah, really? Last, last week was one of the ones.